If you could, take a minute to silence your cellphones, please. And your eye watch, because I always forget to do mine. Before, again, I'd like to ask that if we could rise just for a moment of silence to honor the life and service of Councilman George Wolverton and remind everyone of his visitation and funeral tomorrow morning. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and today and also honoring, taking a moment of silence to honor. You can see.
I have an invocation.
Oh, no. Yeah, hold on. Hold on, hold on. I get a little emotional over the George thing because George was a great leader and a great friend, and I spent a lot of time having discussions about him and my dad and about going back into those years of friendship and things. And when I would do wrong, he would spank me and say that my dad would get on to me if he was here. So I never had the problem of him not taking a moment to whip me in the shade. So now, I ask Councilman Jones to give the invocation and Councilman Parker to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Shall we pray? Our heavenly Father, Lord God almighty, again, we come tonight, we pray for your guidance, your wisdom, your knowledge. We pray, especially prayer tonight, for the world with the family, in that time of bereavement, sorrow, and sadness, that your Holy Spirit will comfort them. This is our prayer we pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please welcome the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all for doing that again. Now, we'll start off with amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda by members of the council administration?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. For executive session, I need to remove the potential lease, sale, or purchase of property.
Okay. Anybody else?
8J, we can pull that off. Oh, I'm amending the consent of due, but can I do that now?
Is that it?
I haven't had a chance to review it again today, so I'll just have to work on it. It had changed, so. Okay, that's it. That's it.
We'll make that 8J, now 12B2, under commerce items.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone here to address council tonight on an item that is not on the agenda? Anybody? Okay. Committee of recognition will start with the mayor's youth council. Is there one here from the mayor's youth council? Raise your hand, please. Can you stand? And I know you're like, ah, he's gonna call me out. I am. I just want to know your name and what school you go to. Hey, thank you guys for coming. I appreciate you. We're always proud of the mayor's youth council and the things that they do. So thank you for coming tonight and engaging into the city council meeting. Next is business spotlight. That is Crown Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram Fiat. And in case you don't know that, they are a proud Pascagoula business and been in business 43 years here. They're located on Short Cut Road and...
In beautiful Pascagoula.
In beautiful Pascagoula. Look, they talk about how proud they are to be here in the city, and were mentioned in all their ads and were even in their logo. So in case you haven't seen it, we're gonna play a video here tonight.
Gulf Coast, are you in the market for a truck?
We've got what you need.
Hey, Andy and Bobby Dalgo with Crown Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram Fiat in Pascagoula.
We're proud to offer the best trucks on the planet, Ram trucks.
If you're looking for the best truck at the lowest price, Crown has it.
If you're looking for the most features and technology you can imagine, Crown has it.
Well, maybe you need to tow up to 30,000 pounds. Yep, Crown has it.
Come see us at Crown Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram Fiat in beautiful Pascagoula.
Or see all the trucks online at crown247.com.
Well, I want to say thank you to Andy and Bobby Dalgo for their commitment to Pascagoula and sticking around and also promoting the city of Pascagoula and all their paid advertisements. So if you need a truck or car, go see them, please, and support them. Forty-three years, that's a long time. Next up is where our county partners are gonna come up and talk tonight. Brian Fullerton, the county administrator.
Thank y'all for having us tonight. I'm gonna turn most of the conversation over to Chase, but we wanted to give you an update about the no-wake zone in the Pascagoula River that was, is being established, that we are going to establish. This was based on a request that the city made to the county. That's the process for getting a no-wake zone established. Comes from the city to the county, and then we make the formal request to the Bureau of Marine Resources, which we did. And it was approved in September of last year, I believe, was the date that they approved the no-wake zone. Since that time, we have been working with an engineer to try to sign the area so that it's properly done. That includes signs on the CSX bridge there and also on the Pascagoula High Rise Bridge along Highway 90. And so those are gonna take a while to establish. It will also take us a while to establish buoys in the main channel or pilings. We'll have to get those permitted as well. But as an interim measure, what we are here for tonight is to see if we can get the city to give us some permission to put up some signs on your structures to at least go ahead and start establishing the no-wake zone. Maybe we can get people to slow down in the area with these signs in the interim until we're able to mark it in a more permanent way. So what we would like to do, or get permission from the city council, to do is to place a couple of these signs on your pier there where the launch is and maybe a few over on the other side on Lowry Island where your river park is on that pier. These signs, two on the east side, and maybe as many as three or four on the west side of the river there, and go ahead and get, move forward in trying to establish the no-wake zone. So that's why we're here tonight.
Well, I appreciate y'all coming, and you know, I came and discussed with the DMR our feelings on it as well. So I don't think anybody here, after we talked about it, have an issue at all putting signs where it is, and we'll need to have, I guess, Jackie, where's Jackie? Is she here? Yeah. She coordinate that, coordinate that through Ryan and Jackie, and you should be fine. Does anybody have any comments or anything? Okay. Appreciate y'all coming. They do the work to get it cleaned up so that we can have that done for the city's sake.
Okay. This last paragraph on the letter I received on the eighth is not quite clear to me. An adjudication that this parcel of land is in need of cleaning by the city or is designated to re-enter the property to maintain cleanliness for a period of one year without any further hearing. Notice of intent to re-enter will be displayed seven days in advance at the parcel of land and at City Hall. What does that mean?
Taylor.
Well, that's, I can speak to that. That's what the statute says, that if your property is to be declared public menace, which it sounds like the council's not wanting to take a vote on specifically right now whether or not it is a public menace, rather, it sounds like they're gonna give you time to allow us to inspect it. So, but if you were to be declared a public menace, the statute would allow us to come in as stated in that paragraph, which it's easier for me to explain it offline if we get there, but I would prefer not to cross that bridge unless they actually voted to be a public menace, so.
That confused me.
And I don't mind explaining it to you, but at this point, that's not applicable to you unless they declare it to be a public menace, which it sounds like they're not going to.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to table it until...
No. Motion to table or declare it 60 days, work with her. Do I have a motion?
I'm a little concerned about declaring this a public menace because I haven't heard yet what the menace is.
Thank you.
I don't think we know.
And I'm all for giving her time and wanting the ability to work with the staff, but I just, I haven't heard a presentation of what, you know, what are the circumstances, what are the facts that lead this to be a public menace? So I'm a little, I'm very leery to do a vote unless it's to table this matter until next month, you know.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to table it until we have enough information and y'all get together. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Am I done?
You can, you're good. Hey, work with them, ma'am. They'll get you where you need to be. Make sure y'all get the contact information.
Okay, Washington Lot on the southwest corner of Washington and Martin. It's been a problem for many years. Was formerly a house on this property, but has long since been a vacant lot. Holder was created in 2013. Subsequent letters for grass in 16, two letters in 16. Letter in citation issued in 2017. No appearance in court. We have had prior resolutions on this property, and we had one, as a matter of fact, last year, but lost it because the taxes were redeemed in November. So we recommend adopting another resolution to mow and clean the lot.
Wouldn't this property own by somebody in California?
It is.
Yeah. All right, so I'll make a motion to declare the property a public menace. Yeah, is there anybody here to represent this? Okay, so I'm still, my motion stands. I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next.
And our final property is 2107 10th Street. Josh and I were on site today with the new owner. It was recently purchased. It is a vacant house and has been vacant for some time, in need of some serious repairs. We have sent letters for high grass. And it was in court last year with a prior owner, but since that time, it has been purchased by another buyer. And it is in need of some rehab, and we spoke to the owner on site today, and I believe he is here tonight to address the council.
Before we address that, again, I'm sort of begging the question, what is the nuisance? I mean, the fact that a house is in need of rehab, this probably applies to about 25% of the houses in town. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is what are the circumstances that warrant this being designated a public nuisance?
We had some prior cases of vagrants.
Okay.
Living in this house.
What about the grass? Is the grass he cut?
The new owner is now mowing the grass, and we are very appreciative of that.
Is the house secure?
It's not at the moment, but that's because he's in the process of tearing out a lot of the walls to begin.
What, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize. Why do you need us to declare it a public menace?
Well, Donovan recommended adopting a resolution if he does not comply with the following requirements. Within 60 days, acquiring building permits for licensed electrical and plumbing contracts, removing all interior coverings for inspection, rewiring structure to comply with the National Electric Code, and demonstrating continued progress over that period.
Well, why don't we see this back in 60 days if he hadn't done all that?
So what you're wanting us to do is make it, declare it a public menace and give them 60 days like we did that, like we did before. But I'm still like Stephen, I don't... Have you been, it's a new owner, and have you been inside of it?
Yes, we walked, Josh and I worked Saturday.
So where's the owner? Is the owner here?
Right here. Yeah, let's hear from you.
Let me hear from you. Come on. Let's hear about your plans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Joe Mallett. I'm the new owner.
Joe, thank you for coming.
I was dealing with Mr. Rohr, the previous owner, because someone, I don't know if they were teenagers or what, had been using the house as kind of a clubhouse. They didn't use any tools, but they kicked in some sheet rock. They put some graffiti on the walls, and he was pretty much over it, staying half the year in the Philippines. So he reached out to me about it, and I told him I would. We made a deal. So the house is very, very sturdy. I don't know the intent exactly to take it to the level that it's been taken, but I'm new. I got a letter dated the eighth, and Island Winds Title didn't complete the transfer or the sale until the 10th filed. I just got, I just picked up the paperwork, so...
The 10th of this month.
Yeah, two days after the letter had been dated.
Yeah.
So they're on top of it. I've been cutting the grass for about six, eight months and been keeping it up. There, on those windows right there, there was graffiti sprayed in there. I cleaned that like four months ago. And I asked Brad to call me if he had any concerns, and we wouldn't have to have any kind of process on anything, because I own at least 25 properties in the city.
So what are you gonna do with this? You gonna rehab it?
I'm gonna rehab it. The worst thing that was found on the property today was the floor had dropped about an inch, inch and a half between the utility room and the kitchen on one spot that I couldn't even notice with the naked eye. But I, you know, I'm fine with putting a little beam under there. And we sprayed over all the graffiti with white paint, on white. I've showed intent to bring this property up before I even owned it.
Have you applied for a building permit, Joe?
I have. I was told that it, you know, that it was, I could apply for it, but it wouldn't necessarily be granted. They didn't say they wouldn't grant it, they just didn't tell me they would. They asked for an elevation certificate, so I got Louis Aldred to do it for me immediately, but I got two days' notice to do the elevation certificate.
Mr. Frederick, I'm concerned that the notice was issued to a prior owner and subsequently changed hands through no fault of the city. And whether or not, I realize the owner is here, present today, but I'm also aware of what the statutory requirements are in terms of notice, so I would appreciate your comment on that.
Well, I didn't understand, Brett, let me see, I don't have the copy of the file in front of me. I have it whenever I looked at it when we did it back in the day. Are you saying I own an investment?
I am.
Okay, well, then he received...
Okay, all right, okay. My bad.
I got it on, I don't know the exact signature date. It was like the 11th or something, you know, right after the letter came out, within a day or so of my filing.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, he's applied for a building permit and hadn't been granted yet. I think, give him a chance to get this thing, you know, back up to snuff and in compliance with the code, and if we don't hear anything in the next 60 days or so, then I think it needs to come back before us. I mean, that's kind of the timeframe I think, Joe, you're looking under anyway, is to get this thing done sooner rather than later.
Definitely. What I would request is that I get the standard three months to start, but I'll start within probably a couple of weeks. I have another project I'm trying to finish in Mobile right now. So if I had a little bit of time, since I've already shown goodwill on the property before I even owned it, I don't think it needs a plumbing permit. There's no plumbing damage that I noticed. On the, I let them in today when they asked, no problem. And it was brought to my attention that there may be some wiring work that needs to be done due to it being outdated. I'm okay with that. If, I'll rewire the house if that's what they want. I've got the ability to do that. But plumbing, I don't think that's necessary at this point.
Let me hear from you, Doc.
Upon our inspection this morning, what we're requesting is to give him 60 days to get the walls opened up, and then let me come back and do a full inspection, because the walls are still closed, and we can't see everything that's inside the walls. The electrical is such standard, it needs to be updated. It's old, the house was built in probably the 40s. It's got a little bit of structural damage underneath, but the house is salvageable. So what we were asking is give him 60 days, get it tore out, let us come do the inspection and show that there's something going on. And we can extend that as it goes through. We just don't want the house to sit there and just repair for a year.
Can I ask a dumb question? Why do you have to tear the walls out?
Well, you can't rewire that house with, you've seen the pictures of it, most of the walls are torn anyway, half of them are gone.
I haven't seen the, did you show us pictures of the walls?
No, I don't, I don't think that was in the picture as well.
Vaguers apparently have kicked holes in the walls. There's areas of sheet rock that are missing.
But why do you have to tear all the walls? I mean, I'm just confused, because I know you can pack sheet rock.
There's no insulation in the house. You have to have insulation in the house. That's part of the energy code, and it's ICC regulations.
Are you, are you planning on taking out the sheet rock?
No.
Can't you blow that in? I mean, I'm just, look, I'm no home builder, but I've built a house before and...
The issue with that house, those old houses, they have fire blocks in between the studs, between the lower half and the upper half.
I got you.
You can't get anything through there without pulling it out.
Got you.
And we can't see what is in there without pulling it out.
My house was like that, so I understand that.
It's a very old house, it's been sitting, it's partially opened up. It needs some repair.
So you're willing to work with it, is what you're saying?
Yes, we're willing to work. We're just saying, if we give him 60 days to get it tore out, let me do another inspection to make sure that we're not gonna let him put something back together. He doesn't, and it's not that he would do that, but an extra set of eyes finds problems that you're not gonna find on the ground.
He's got 25 houses in the city. Have you ever known him to do anything?
No.
Okay.
And that's what I'm just asking for.
Okay.
Give him 60 days, see how it goes, and then we're gonna work with him from there. We're giving him all the time he needs to do.
Got it. Are you good with that?
Do you have a problem with giving the 90 days that he asked us for?
Yeah, well, I, I'm okay with the 90 days, I think we all are, but what I'm trying to do is find out, are you okay with it?
Well, there's a couple of things that I don't completely agree with, but I would do if compelled to do.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do, let's resolve it, and then what y'all do is, we'll table it if you guys, I'll table it. I'll make a motion to table it, which I do now, and then revisit it within 60 days. If y'all are working together, you can extend it to 90 days. That'll be up to them. And it'd be 120 days, as long as it gets finished within a reasonable amount of time, and we'll leave it to that. If it doesn't, then you bring it back to us. Does everybody agree with that?
Well, I want to bring something up that Ms. Jennifer just said about tearing out all the walls. There's kicked in sheet rock, but everything, I mean, it could be easily replaced without tearing out all the walls. Now, he says I need to insulate the outside walls. If that's the will of the city, I can do that. I, that needs it.
Well, whatever the statute requires.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there's some damage that can be repaired as far as sheet rock is concerned.
Okay.
I could make this house livable and decent, very decent, you know, if I was not made to do a whole bunch of other stuff, you know, and then open up walls on a Navy house. I mean, it looks great, but...
Duly noted. Duly noted. Work with him and everything, and if you have a problem, we'll come back. Okay? All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve as amended? Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, city manager?
Mayor, council, in front of y'all, are attached to your agenda that's provided our two proposals that we received in regards to the annual audit services. One of those is from Alexander Van Loon, Sloane Levens and Farr, and the other is from Columber Harvey and Associates. Both of these...
Ryan, I'm gonna interrupt you because I don't have what you're saying.
I can give you mine, but they were attached to...
I have an extra copy.
Yeah.
You talking about the agenda?
No, I got the agenda. He said we were having other information.
Yeah, this was attached to, yeah.
It was in the package.
Oh.
Yeah.
But you can have mine.
No, I read that one.
Okay.
I didn't know there was one reference, something where we need to look at tomorrow.
No, but you can have mine. I have my notes if you'd like. So these are the two proposals that we received after we rejected. The one proposal that was received by WMO, both of these firms are in Gulfport, in discussions that we have had with individuals or entities that are listed within those as references. They have due up and down the county, municipalities, counties, utility districts. The staff is okay with either one. As you can see, or if not, these would be three-year contracts. Columber is proposing roughly $61,460 for this first year, whereas Alexander Van Loon is proposing $75,000, and then they incrementally go up for each year thereafter. Given the city's financial situation, it would be the staff's recommendation based off of the price, as well as that we believe them to be the same. We're not the same, but what's the word I'm looking for?
Similar.
Similar, and their attributes. It would be our recommendation that you go with Columber for Fletcher and Harvey.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the proposal from the Columber firm to perform the municipal auditing for the fiscal year 2018.
Uh, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I may, just for point of clarification, what I would like to do, since we're already here and we're already behind, we're behind the gun, that in addition to accepting the proposal, that y'all authorize the city attorney to negotiate acceptable any terms and conditions that may be necessary, so.
Well, then, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city attorney to negotiate acceptable terms for an ultimate contract between the city and the Columber firm. Thank you.
Any further discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Is that it?
For me, yes, sir.
Quarter?
Mayor and council, what you have before you now is a baseball...
Mayor and Council, what you have before you now is a, uh, baseball and softball field grooming proposal. Now, there are two in front of you. One is for Twelfth Street, Louise, uh, Street Park and, uh, MCC complex. The other is simply for Twelfth Street and Louise Street Park. As you recall during the budget workshop this past year, along with discussions with the sports complex, it was noted, uh, a number of times that the need to make sure that these fields were playable for this baseball season, given the fact that we're missing this baseball season at the former Tucker Street complex for boys. These funds used for this will have to come from the recreation bond, um, as previously discussed. But the proposal, as you will see, the one, uh, with Twelfth Street, MCC and Louise Street, uh, the quote, low quote, was from Turf Masters, twenty-two thousand, six fifty, and the one, uh, with Twelfth Street and Louise Street Park was for nineteen thousand, uh, three fifty. And I'll leave that to Council for discussion.
You mentioned about the bond funds, um, that's being used for that, and I had frankly forgotten that discussion. And, and I guess my concern is, is that these are all softball fields, but no softball fields are being impacted by the demolition work that's going on at Tucker. And so, I'm, I'm sort of going back to the question of whichever proposal is accepted, of it being paid with bond proceeds as opposed to current revenues.
Sure.
I mean, I, can you talk about that a little bit? Can we?
Gladly. So the, 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 the boys' season will be played with five and six-year-olds and seven, eight-year-olds T-ball and what they call Rookie League, uh, at, at the girls' softball complex with the girls on, on Twelfth Street. The seven, the nine and ten, eleven, twelve are the minors and majors. Be played at, at Louise Street with some, depending on rainouts, whatever, may have to use MCC Park for some of those games, depending on scheduling, um, a- along with the other facility use agreements that are in place, both with resurrection and with the, the potential for a Babe Ruth thirteen-to-eighteen-year-old league, should that, should that make to the league.
Okay, so I, I just wanna make sure that even on both proposals, and I realize this is coming from Turf Master.
That's correct.
Where it says softball fields, and I, I understand that they, these fields will be available for use by the boys.
This is primarily for, uh, for Louise Street is primarily the boys, yes.
Okay.
In the softball complex on Twelfth Street will be used boys and girls.
Okay, I, I just, I wanted to understand, we're not, since we're the, we're demoing the boys' fields, these fields that are being paid for through the use of bond funds, they will be used by the boys while their fields are...
That's correct.
Being constructed. Okay, I'm, I've got it. Right.
Okay, so go over again. The fields will be used on Twelfth Street?
So the, the girls' softball will be playing on Twelfth Street as they have been for, for years, uh, along with the T-ball, which is five and six, uh, for boys, and seven and eight, which is Rookie League for boys as well. Uh, on Louise Street, you'll have those two fields, uh, primarily for nine and ten and eleven and twelves, uh, which were minor and major leagues. And the suggestion was made to also have MCC P, uh, Park as a backup, uh, should there be rainouts or any issues with scheduling as the season progresses, uh, along with the potential for, should the boys make, uh, a thirteen-to-eighteen-year-old Babe Ruth league, of course, they'll use that at L.A. as well.
And, and, Ryan, uh, Mr. Frederick, my concern is, is not with, again, the, the spend, the expenditure. It's where the source of the funds are coming from for this, so versus bond as opposed to current operating revenues. So, I mean, I, i- if we're justifying it under the, that this is being used to provide backup fields or fields for the boys to use while their new complex is being, uh, constructed, then I, I get it, and I just wanted to justify the use of the bond funds. That's, okay, all right.
And it falls well within the parameters stated for the use of the bond funds.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, please. So, um, how many, how much money do we have in the bond funds dedicated to the new complex?
So currently, based on last total, Ms. Strusler, I believe it was, uh, for the new complex was ten point four, I believe, as, uh, uh, roundabout number for the new complex.
And how, that's how much we have left?
No, that's how much that the, the complex will cost totally.
And how much do we have left?
Do you have that in front of you, Ms. Strusler?
I do. I probably did it.
Do we have enough to cover the ten point four million construction cost? I think that's the ultimate question.
That's where I'm going, because we, if we can't spend money, we don't have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, my, well, I mean, we, that's happened before, so we cannot continue to do that.
That's correct.
So my next, my next thing was going to be, uh, we gotta find some, we've gotta find at least half of this money somewhere to cut somewhere else in the city. Be it fireworks or something else. We gotta find it somewhere to cut.
Well, I think, are you proposing, Jennifer, that, that a portion of these funds be paid out of current revenues as opposed to the bond fund itself?
I'm just proposing we find, well, if, if we don't, if we don't have this money, if we don't have this money somewhere, we need to find, especially if we don't have a thirteen-plus-year-old league that's going to be using those fields.
Well, again, I'm, I'm just, I, I understand. I was just trying to, they're saying the bond funds are available, that this qualifies under the bond, and I guess I'm, I'm...
Well, I'm waiting to hear that. Do we have that number yet?
No, it's not, it's not currently available.
We didn't, we didn't know that, that question would be asked, so...
Did y'all not know we were gonna ask that question? Do we have the bond funds available? I mean, really?
I think that just, I thought, I just heard an answer that we have more than ten point four million to cover the construction costs, is what I'm saying. Okay.
Frank, so the ten point four million, that includes what we initiated for...
That's all three phases of the, yes, sir. That's all three phases of the, of the...
But we really don't know what the two concession stands are gonna cost, so that's still a bit of a mess.
That's correct.
I, I mean, I, I don't mean to get off on a tangent here, but I, I certainly would, personally would prefer that it be paid out of current, uh, revenues, if at all possible. And I think what Ms. Columber is proposing is that we find some area of current expenditures that could be cut or eliminated to pay for this, uh, uh, expenditure, which is in support of, you know, the bond funds, I guess, in general. She would prefer, and that's certainly very understandable, that it be paid out of current revenues. I mean, have I kind of stated that?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that, is that, is that something you think that you could find?
We will, we will do our best to find it and bring you back a, a, a recommendation. However, given, given the timeframe for the start of the season, not passing this tonight.
Oh, no, I'm okay with approving this, but I'm saying the challenge to our city staff is, you need to find at least half of this money to cut somewhere else in the city.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Because there's a lot of wants that can be cut.
All right.
Is it?
Yeah, motion.
Go ahead.
Let's see if I can phrase that kindly. Um, so I, I move that we approve, uh, the proposal with the, um... With the, uh, what am I trying to say?
Stipulation.
Yeah, the stipulation that we, the city staff tries to find at least half of that money somewhere else.
Got it. And this would be including MCC Park?
Including MCC, yeah, both places.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So do, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good. All right, uh, next on the agenda is a resolution calling for a special election to fill the unexpired term of Ward Two Councilman George Wolverton.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, as you know, Mr. Wolverton passed away this past weekend, and by, by, um, state statute, you have ten days to declare a vacancy in that seat. And unfortunately, given the timeframe, today was that day. I've spoken with his family. They understand the need for this. This resolution outlines the dates of which the special election would be held. Just to clarify on, on that before you pass this, um, the voter registration deadline would be February nineteenth for both the in-person registration and the postmark date for mailed applications by February eighteenth. Uh, dead, the deadline to qualify to run for office for this position in Ward Two would be February twenty-fifth at five P.M. Special election date would be Tuesday, March nineteenth from seven to seven P.M. At the, uh, Ward Two precincts, which is listed in the, in the resolution. And the runoff day, should it be required, would be April the second from seven to seven at the same precinct. Uh, notices will be going out, uh, in the Mississippi Press and the Sun-Herald starting on Friday, and run for four consecutive weeks to notify this. It'll also be promoted, of course, across our social media and website channels. So that is that.
So just to clarify for people out there, this is following the statute?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which is twenty-three, fifteen, eight fifty-seven, which is listed in the resolution.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution calling for a special election to fill the unexpired term of Ward Two Councilman George Wolverton.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Claims Docket, um... We, do it? Okay, sorry. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the docket of claims?
As amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, Mayor Council items, uh...
Please, it'd be Ms. Columber.
So Ms. Columber?
Yeah.
That's, uh...
Twelve B one.
Twelve B one, yeah.
Actually, can we do two first, and then we'll go back to one?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the Public Private Partnership Conference. Is it true that Mississippi does not have a Public Private Partnership Act?
That I'm not aware of, but the purpose of this conference, if I could expound on that, please. Uh, this conference was brought to our attention by Supervisor Taylor at the Board of Supervisors, uh, and actually, on multiple occasions, asked us to send someone. And then, given that every time we have met with a state entity, primarily MDA, who's controlling funds of BP, uh, and other pots of money, the one common theme we kept hearing was, is that in order, it will really help in order to obtain pri- public money if you've got private money with it. And so, based off of our conversations with, uh, certain state entities, as well as, uh, Mr. Taylor, having already been and believing that it was, uh, well worth, um, our time and money, that's why we decided to go.
Okay, maybe I don't understand it then, because, uh, if we don't have a Public Private Partnership Act in Mississippi, I guess I don't understand.
Is, what it is, is it brings a number of private partners there, as well as certain governmental entities, and basically puts you all, uh, and I'm paraphrasing this, I mean, they're, it's pretty large and I can provide you with the brochure, but it puts you there, and it basically allows you to share best practices on how other governmental entities have been able to leverage their public money with private money to obtain financing, which we all know we need. And again, that's been the theme that we have heard, uh, when we were in Jackson, when we speak to MDA, I mean, I...
Define public and private act. What, what do you mean by that?
Well, that's what I thought this conference was about.
It's, I don't, is it?
It's not about the act. It's about putting these groups together.
That's what I, and that's what I, and I guess the only thing I tend to think about is the wood pellet thing with the Port Authority, because that's the only thing I've ever known.
No, but it's, it's more along the lines of, for example, um, you know, if you're going to look at doing a private development, we can use the Riverfront as an example, even though that's probably a bad example. But if we are going to, or I'll use PRA as an example. We secured somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five million dollars in economic development incentive funds, which PRA turned around into twenty-three million dollars roughly in private contributions. And when we met with the Speaker, well, when we met with the Governor, Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker, I guess it was a month or so ago, uh, and thanked them for those funds, we said, we believe Pascal Gula, is someone you can use and say, look, you give us public money, we will turn it into private investment. And that is what I believe this is, what this event is, uh, and, um, so that's where we are. It's to assist us in that process.
Which I was gonna go, but this is the City Manager former governor, so we gotta let the City Manager go.
And the price for me personally is will be less than thou- one thousand dollars, because I don't need a hotel room.
Where you staying?
Family, walking in on the couch.
All right.
You know, I guess I just think, we're, again, I'm going back to the, just because things are budgeted doesn't mean you have to spend the money, and if we don't really have to go and we don't really need to go, we need to tighten the purse strings, we don't have any money. I can, you know, y'all hear me say that over and over.
At some point, you gotta give them guys, I mean, you give them a budget, you gotta expect them to be able to make decisions. We don't have to micromanage him to a point where we're gonna question everything that he does.
But I, I'm not questioning everything he does, but I guess I think, where's the difficulty in not spending money for one year? That's all we asked. One year.
I think, well, I'm not gonna set a precedent of, you know, having us pull everything out and question, especially when we budget them and give them the authority. At some point, you gotta trust them to get, make right decisions.
Well, but they're looking at everything everybody in the city does. So, at some point, we've gotta do our due diligence and ask about things as well. I, I looked at this, you know, I get these P, P three, whatever, conference things, and then that's where I got that from, because I got the same email, and I looked at it, I read it, I, look, I, I did my own little research. So I'm asking the questions. That's what I'm here to do. That's what I'm supposed to do.
Jennifer, I agree, uh, with what you're saying about trying not to spend money. There is a potential here, and, and I've been hearing it for four or five years with this BP. That's what they're looking for, is they're looking for city investment, private investment, and state investment for a nice project. If, if there is some, something available, and I've been to a couple of the public-private continued education things with MML, and you get some good information, but you're right, it's very difficult. It's not an easy task. Uh, if I'm hearing Ryan correctly, this is more or less a networking, getting to know the folks that are in the investment business that, that would possibly be coming in and that, so, you know, with me being from a sales background, if you can spend a thousand dollars and bring home a hundred, it's not gonna work all the time, but it's possible that they could go out there and hit a home run. Possible they could go out there and strike out, and you're right, we're out of two grand or a thousand or whatever it is, but...
You know, you made that same argument when we hired that consultant for sixty grand, and he turned around and brought in almost seven million for us.
And you know what? I'm not opposed to Ryan going. I just wanted to ask the question. That's what we're supposed to do. And if anybody takes offense at me asking the questions, that's what I'm supposed to do. It's not personal.
Don't say it. I mean, I...
I don't think anybody takes offense to this.
Um, you know, at, at, at my house, when I try to spend some money, Jimmy asks me questions. I can't take it personally.
I don't think anybody here does.
He pulls on the purse string. So I, I just have to ask the questions. So, I make the motion that we approve item twelve B...
Two.
Two.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one?
Okay, twelve B one. All right, this, this is just one, kind of along the same lines. It's real easy, just because something's budgeted, to spend the money. They're, they're looking at everything everybody in the city spends, but at what point do we start looking? And it's very easy to do professional development things and spend a lot of money. I know this, because I work in an office where people go on professional development things and spend a lot of money. I know this because I work in an office where people go on professional development things and spend a lot of money. So maybe that's something that we should zero down that budget, and if anybody wants to go on professional development, maybe that's something we as a council need to start looking at.
Well, I, what, Jennifer, what is professional development? Because again, from my own experience, I'll just use Ryan as an example. You know, he has to have a certain number, a certain number of CLE, as you know, on an annual basis. So that's professional development, but he has to have it in order to retain his license to practice law.
That's correct.
So I guess what are we going to, are you asking that we basically put ourselves in a position of approving his CLE? Or are we approving?
Well, what if he wants to spend $5,000 on his CLE? I bet he can get them a lot cheaper.
I'm sure he can.
That's my point.
But that's the whole, I guess, what I'm trying to understand is, if you do it for this item, are we gonna do it for a whole lot of other items? That we've already approved a budgetary item for, and presumably, the staff have the discretion to spend within that level. I'm just, again, I'm asking the question, so.
Okay, so an item came across that I was extremely unhappy about.
Okay.
It was, in my opinion, way too much money to have spent on an item. And it was professional development. That's why this is on here. So yes, that discretionary spending, we need to be looking at it.
Well, again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, once we pass a budget, it's up to them. That's the way I feel about it.
Well, again, just because it's in a budgeted item doesn't mean you have to spend it all.
And again, we have, I mean, we got a city manager, former government. I'm not teetering into that. That's not something I want to do. It's former government, and they have their rules.
I'm just trying to be physically responsible.
Well, I think we are when we make the budget, but I think those guys have dealt, fought with us in this whole budget cycle too. So city manager, former government allows the city manager to do that, and I have already been educated on that former government, and that's not what the people of Pasco want. They want a city manager.
I'm not saying not to have a city manager, former government. What I'm saying is there are certain items we need to take a little bit closer look at, because maybe they're not being.
But that's not our job. Our job is to let the city manager do it. It's the city manager, former government, so.
Well, I think we can voice our opinion, as Jennifer has done, and tell the city manager who works for us that when you're approving professional development, if it's needed for the job, needed for continuing education, then we're all far. But if it's something that's discretionary, please take a hard look at it. So it's, you know.
I agree with that.
I mean, because you've got some firemen, police officers, that have to have that education, professional development. But there's probably some recreation people that make it go somewhere, and it's, you know, a paid vacation by the city. And I, I agree with you, but it would be awful difficult to be able to look at each and every one that comes across the desk, but.
I agree with that.
I mean, I would say as a, as a board, let's ask our city manager to please use discretion and as much money as you can save in professional development, please do.
What did you say, Scott? Because that was my thing, is what do you define as professional development? And you said.
Well, I mean, if it's like professional firefighters, or police, or anybody that, that they need those continued education.
It needs to be required.
To do their job.
Required, then.
Because there is some training, which is not required, but it would assist, and we'll just use the fire guys. It may not specifically be required, but it will make them a better fireman.
But I don't want them to go to Las Vegas to get it.
Okay, and that's my, that's what I'm trying to get to, is that professional development, to me, is vague. I just need to know specifically what y'all want, and we will do that.
Well, I mean, at that point, it's your discretion whether the money's there and/or whether you can delay it for a year, as Councilwoman Columber has said. It's, you know, if it's not life and death, and they ain't got to do it this year, let's not do it this year.
Well, and I think thus far, we've been pretty good at that, but understood. But I'm trying to get to required, what did you say, Scott? And I was trying to write down.
Required, responsible.
Required to do their.
And, and for their job.
Right. Okay, that's fine.
Reasonable.
All right. So I guess somebody needs to make a motion on.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know that it requires a motion.
Okay.
It just needs to be reasonable, responsible.
Required, necessary, reasonable, responsible.
All right, there you go.
Non-discretionary.
Hey, everybody good? All right. There wasn't anybody that signed up, was there? Okay. All right, this time, we're gonna entertain a motion to go into a closed session to consider the need for an executive session.
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you all for attending. We're gonna go in and have some conversation.